Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. Madam Corcoran, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 31, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you. And now if we could have the roll call, please.
Ms. Allen, here. Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
President Fox, here.
Okay, and now if we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay. Madam Corcoran, could you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
Yes, thank you. A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk’s office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we’re on to approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of regular and closed session of, it was March 19, I believe?
March 19.
Is that correct?
No, it was 15.
15, my mistake. March 15. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and now we’re moving on to reports. Our first report is from the mayor. Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council President. Good evening, everyone. It’s nice to see everybody here this evening. A few things. First, the PSENG project to replace gas pipes throughout Summit is currently underway. Work is expected to continue through December 2022. PSENG crews will be working on the following streets in Summit over the next week: Hobart Avenue, DeBarry Place, Fremont Road, Hickory Road, and Summit Avenue. Work will take place Monday through Friday between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., weather permitting. Contact information for PSENG and information on affected streets is available online at cityofsummit.org. This is an important project. We need to keep these pipes more efficiently used, and Mr. Schreger did a presentation about this with PSENG, and we understand why it might be a little inconvenient. It needs to be done. NJ American Water will be performing hydrant flushing in the Summit area beginning April 3 and continuing through April 7. If discolored water occurs, run cold water for a few minutes until it is clear. Check for discolored water before using the washing machine or dishwasher. Please contact NJ American Water with any questions at 1-800-272-1325. Spring leaf collection began on Monday, yesterday, and will continue through Friday, April 22. Leaves should be placed at the curb in paper biodegradable bags for pickup on your regular household trash collection day. Property owners should not rake or blow leaves into piles in the street. Do not include twigs, branches, or other yard debris in leaf bags. I also have an update on the Summit Police Department increased community education, outreach, and patrols. There have been fewer thefts these past two months. Patrols have been using a grid system where eight to 10 streets are grouped together and routinely patrolled and tracked. Since the end of January, there have been approximately 1,800 grid checks. These grid checks, combined with routine residential patrols, have resulted in nine incidents where criminal activity was deterred once the officer activated their emergency lights and the would-be criminals fled the area. I have also been visiting PTO meetings at all Summit schools with members of the Summit Police Community Policing Unit, sorry, with the Summit Police Community Policing Unit to present information on traffic and pedestrian safety, distracted driving, teen driving, and auto theft prevention. These conversations have been interesting, informative on both sides, and I’m thankful to the principals and PTO presidents for inviting us to share information on these important topics. I know the Summit Police Department looks forward to building discussions on other topics in the future. And that’s all I have for tonight, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now moving on to Michael Rogers for the city administrator’s report.
Council President, I’m going to spend enough time here taking people’s attention, so I’ll leave it back to you.
You’re going to pass? Okay, all right. And I just had a couple of things on the council president’s report. First of all, a big thank you for the volunteers from last weekend’s Earth Day cleanup and tiny forest tree planting. The Summit Environmental Commission did an excellent job organizing the cleanup on Saturday and Sunday at Bryant Park, Martins Brook, and Passaic River Park. Members of council, Mayor Rades, and I enjoyed attending the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the tiny forest and appreciated being part of an effort to plant 150 new trees there. The Summit Free Market is back this weekend. Head to the transfer station on 40 New Providence Avenue on Saturday, April 9, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. You can drop off any unwanted yard sale quality items and browse donated items for free. More information is available at summitfreemarket.org. Thank you for everyone who has reached out about the Broad Street West redevelopment project. My colleagues and I appreciate the conversations that we’ve been having with residents and business owners, and we value your feedback. This effort began with community meetings, and input from the community and key stakeholders informed the current building design. If you have not visited the Broad Street West page on the city website, I encourage you to do so. We continue to add new material every day, so just keep checking in. You can find reports and video presentations on all aspects of the project there. So that’s all I have on my report, and now we’re going on to the highlight of the evening, the municipal budget presentation by our city administrator, Michael Rogers.
Thank you, Council President. Well, I can say it’s great to be back at City Hall giving this presentation. Two years ago, I was in my guest bedroom, wearing flip-flops, giving this municipal budget presentation, so it’s great to be back. All right, we’ll get into this. So this process starts in September of a year, going into the new year. I want to thank all department heads, their staff, working with the council and their respective committees. It’s a lot of effort. I thank my staff, who’s actively working on this for months. And as you can see, I’m just going to quickly go through this. This is probably, we send out our memo in August, we start getting into this. By October, we have preliminary budgets from all the department heads, and we start to get into discussion with committees and the council, and then we’re on to, we have our, every year we have our capital budget, preliminary capital budget presentation in December, and then we get into reviewing operating budgets in January with the department heads, finance committee, capital projects, starts going through that budget, and there was a lot of work to do in the capital budget this year. And then we are here tonight to present for the introduction of the 2022 municipal budget. And our plan is, we have to wait at least 28 days before we can actually have the public hearing and be up for adoption, so that will take place on May 3 right now, it’s scheduled for. Okay, so I’m going to quickly go through these. There’s a pretty decent-sized document that you’ll find on the website. It’ll be posted by tomorrow morning. One section of it is our key goals, our overarching goals with our key actions and objectives. I’m just showing sort of just the overarching goals here with what we’ve been dealing with with COVID over the past few years and trying to get out of that. I think it was, our staff is much better in how we can be flexible and certainly adapt to the changing environment, and I think we did a really great job the last two years with doing that, and I hope you feel the same way. Fiscal response is always at the forefront of what I do and what I think we all find important. And then Broad Street West, sorry, I want to skip over that one, but it’s, go back. Okay, Broad Street West, a lot of work to do there. We’re going to continue that discussion, and, I don’t know why it stopped working. Okay, I’m going to do this a different way. Now we’re on to just technology and what we do to improve the efficiency for what, when you’re interacting with our government and all of what we have to offer online for permits, licenses, and just communication in general. Certainly, our capital budget reflects a lot of what we do with our capital assets and trying to maintain the extensive infrastructure we have in the city. And then certainly with communication, that’s an ongoing, everyday, 24/7 process that we try to keep up with and provide as much information to the public as possible. And then our workforce is important. We’re always trying to, you know, go through different, keep up with the training, license renewals, and just anything that we can do to get feedback from our, how we’re operating to improve our municipal services, and then just any new challenges that we have to deal with in a given year and trying to find innovative solutions. And then really just, this last part is more about customer service accessibility, and one focus this year, what we’re trying to do with our website is to make it more ADA compliant. There’s a lot of work that’s going into that, so that’s one of the key actions. And now on to the challenges. I’ll start off with the challenges for the general fund. What this particular year, what we were facing, revenue has been a problem for a number of years now, and this year, while we saw some improvement in some of the revenue items this year that dropped off significantly in 2020, we’re still not where we were back in 2019. For example, the interest on investments, which is just cash deposits, what we earn. We don’t earn a lot. We have a very conservative cash management plan that we have to abide by, which is state statute governed. But interest rates being where they are, you don’t earn any money. That’s why they’re significantly down. Back in 2019, that was our revenue item, line item, $522,000, what we were able to anticipate. Last year, we collected $31,000. So this year, we’re able to anticipate more. We expect with federal funds rate increasing throughout the year, I think there’ll be more that we’ll earn on our cash deposits. So I think this year, we’re anticipating about $100,000, but it’s still significantly down. So that is, you know, one challenge. Municipal court fees, we’re on a downward trend. We were near $500,000 in 2019. Last year, I think we collected about $188,000. But just the first few months, we’ve seen a significant increase. I think we’re trending in the right direction, but we’re only anticipating about $200,000 this year. Enterprise contributions, we have a lot of reserve amounts we’ve been using to pay off municipal debt service and other reserve amounts that we’ve been using over the last several years. That’s the impact that we’ve had in that area. Luckily, we’ve had the American Rescue Plan monies that we were able to use last year and the second tranche this year, but still down $600,000. And then the parking service utility was doing phenomenal up until 2020. We were able to use upwards of $800,000 from the utility into the general fund. That went to zero in 2021. That’s a big, significant loss of revenue. They had a better year last year, still not able to really take over. It’s going to take some years to recover from that. On the appropriation side, debt. Debt’s been a topic of many of our budgets. It continues to rise every year. Still a challenge, will continue to be a challenge. Recycles, curbside collection. We expected it. We went out to have a bid just recently. We know what the market is looking like based on some other municipalities who have recently went out. We’re expecting the recycling curbside collection to double in cost. So we have a mid-year contract with our current one, vendor, which will expire. They’re not submitting for another bid. We expect this to double. So that’s an additional $190,000 that we’ll incur this year for the second half of the year, at least. Crossing guards, we had a really significant problem funding these positions. We upped the annual, the average hourly cost to $25 we offered, and we got an influx of candidates, which really helped the police in that public safety area. So, but there’s a cost to it. And then in the workers’ comp, insurance, general liability, we started to increase there, and then in the pension contributions there. So going, this is our financial plan. This encompasses all funds, general, parking, and sewer. This year, the general fund is down significantly, as you can see in the capital budget. It’s how you fund, debt is how you fund your capital budget. So we have to be very conscious about what we’re absolutely necessary, or it’s necessary to do in any given year now, and we took action, we worked, we did a lot of hours, worked with primarily in Department of Community Services where the bulk of the cost is. We had to make a lot of tough decisions on what we needed to fund, but it’s almost down 50%. Our operating budget, as you can see, 1.3%. It’s not bad, but that’s just with all the challenges we talked about and the competing costs. Onto, so sewer, there, we just have a lot of sewer work, pipe replacement, roads, that you’ll see greater detail on our capital budget plan, and that’s where you see the increase there. And then in the parking services, we’re, a little bit of the cost for just employee replacement, parking enforcement, which we weren’t funding for a couple of years, some of that cost there, but a lot of the park mobile fees, it’s very expensive to run, as everybody knows, so every transaction, but still, it’s all the banking fees, everything that we’re getting charged, plus some other additional operating costs that we incur, so that’s what you see as the increase there. And this is the complete total. We’re still down, just under, we’re about .06%. This is for the general fund budget summary points. Municipal tax rate, that’s what most people care about, is going to be just under 2%. This is sort of the high-level surplus. We’re using $300,000 more in our surplus. Local revenues is up. Enterprises, as I said, those reserve amounts are down. The levy is the increase to balance the budget at $875,000. That says 3.2. You’re looking at municipal tax rate, that’s your base growth, and I’ll get into that in a couple more slides. And then just the salary and wage increases there, and then department other expenses, which of those two numbers, the salary and wage, that’s $95,000, I just said with the crossing guard, that’s like 38% of that cost. And then of the other expenses, the $195,000 for the curbside collection is the bulk of So I’m just going to step back and just kind of go back in time a little bit with the tax base, which is what funds your levies, all five levies. Back in 2010, I want to just kind of point, the red bulk of that is your residential tax base. In 2010, that was 80%. That purple wedge is your industrial. That’s mainly, that was your west campus, what at the time was Merck. That was at 7.62%. Then over the next five years or so, in 2015, you see that slight decline again, you see the residential base increasing. Residential base was increasing for other reasons, but your industrial base was starting to decline. Those are the associated numbers. And then the bottom is your total, so it was declining by $17,000 at that point, I’m sorry, $17 million. And now in 2022, that 7.62% is down to 4.68%. And where now your residential base is taking more of the burden for your levies. It’s just to point out the importance of how, you know, what we’re talking about with ratables. I know that’s sort of a debatable topic of what we’re doing. I’d like to see more growth. I’d like to see other classifications take on more of that and lessen the burden for the residential homeowner, but this is where we are in 2022. And then this is just the last five years of the growth. We’ve had some really good, decent growth. Fortunate, not every community has that, but that’s where we are, that bottom, that change in NAV. And last year was about $37 million. This is your total tax base, $3.23 billion. $37 million up. What’s the impact? It’s about $1.6 million total tax revenue, new tax revenue. A portion of that, that 320 is the municipal portion. That’s almost a tax point. Know what I mean by a tax point? One cent on your tax rate, that’s what it is, about $323,000. The impact, what that reduced from that 3.1 down to 1.98, that’s the new growth in your tax base. So here are your rates, just the comparison. What we know is the county looks flat again this year with their budget. That’s great. What we can’t determine at this moment, until they can verify this, all these numbers are estimates. We know what our rate, we have a definitive understanding of the our municipal rate. We know what the school debt number is. We know what the library number is. The county’s a little trickier because even though their budget is flat, how they determine and proportion and assign the levy amounts are based on what your percentage of your share of the total tax base is. So we know that went down. So I think when you get your tax bills this year, you’ll see that go down more, your rate. So right now, all we’re seeing, even though it reflects a slight, well, it reflects a decrease, it might be lower. So just be prepared for that. But right now, this is what we’re running through, our tax levy, and it’s coming out with this rate. But we do, based on our percentage of the overall county levy, we expect that to be down. The percentage has been going down the last few years. That portion of your tax bill has been going down. The school district, we know what that rate is, more or less, around 2%. This is just the rate change, so it doesn’t necessarily equate to the 2%, but that’s what it is year over year. And this just kind of, just gives you a different visual and what the percentage is of your overall tax rate, school district being the largest. And then there’s the debt portion, which we used to combine, but we’re breaking out the debt now, just to kind of, that goes in our budget. We’re a type-one school district. We pay the debt, so that just gets raised through the levy. We pay the debt. They have their budget. That’s what you more or less see in their school budget presentations. And then this just is giving you the average assessed valuation, average assessed home in Summit this year. This is assessed, $425,988. It’s a little over $1 million in fair market value. Ratio is 42.03%. This gives you what you, an estimated tax raise increase, which is about $140, of which is, our portion is about 72, I think. I think I have it somewhere, but it’s around 72. And just so you know, some of these, the library, there’ll be a little bit increase in our levy, but it’s many decimal points, I think many hundreds, it’s like thousands or 10,000, so you’re not really seeing the change there. But again, it may not even be a cent, maybe it will be, but it’s diminishing. This is just giving you from 2012 what the municipal tax rate is, and the average has been about, think, point, like a half a cent over the last, you know, 12 years now, 10, 11 years. This year, you’ve seen that it’s almost two cents. I think we’ve been holding the line and doing a very good job, but most of us know our own experience, costs don’t, it’s tough to manage insurance, and it’s tough to manage, there’s a lot of cost drivers that are far greater than 2%. We manage that the best we can. We’re starting to see a lot of retirements that certainly lowering our salary and wage base, other areas that we’re holding line on insofar as the expenses we can control, but ultimately, it goes back to the challenges I went over earlier in this presentation, and this is where we are. So was this five and a half, about five and a half cents over the last 11 years. That’s, I think, respectable. This reflects, and we kind of show this slide every year, so this is sort of using, since I don’t have the 2022 number rates, so we use what was last year’s fair market value of a home, average assessed home with the 2021, but using the 2022 equalization ratio, which is that 42.03%. For as many years as I can go back, Summit has always been, when you take that, and that’s what they refer to as the effective tax rate. If you were to bring everybody up to 100%, and what you’re paying the average taxpayer, we’re the lowest in the county. Now getting into revenues, it’s just going line by line, what you see in our budget and what the changes are year over year, some of which I’ve already mentioned. I won’t go too much into it, but I’m just trying to give you some snapshot here of the revenue side of the budget. Just addressing a few of the increases, decreases in the two other funds, the local revenue, which is your two main subsections of your revenue, where the increases are coming from. The Aquatic Center had a great year last year, probably Mark’s best year we’ve had, so that’s great. So we’re, from 2021 to 2022, that’s what we’re budgeting, anticipating $125,000 more. 2020, I think we had about $250,000 because we had a little bit of a, we didn’t operate for a few weeks into that year. Municipal court fees is recovering. Hotel motel occupancy fees are recovering. Our cable franchise fees continue to trend downward. It’s just the cord cutting that’s going on in every community, and that’s what that reflects. So every year, it’s going down $14,000, $15,000, it seems. And then just a small item, so decrease is not too bad in that area, but enterprise fund FEMA, we collected on finally, and great work from Tammy Baldwin to go after FEMA for some of the costs that weren’t reimbursed through the CARES Act, and that was $118,000 that we’ll be able to use. As a revenue source, our general capital surplus has been, we’ve had considerable amount there, so we’ve been canceling a lot of capital projects. That goes into our general capital fund, surplus fund. We’re able to use that to pay off debt. And then reserve for sale of municipal assets, we had a big municipal sale, 71 Summit Avenue a few years ago, it was $1.4 million. You know, when we’re selling assets, it goes into our reserve for municipal debt service. It’s still, it’s the same line of thinking we’re thinking about with the Firehouse property, and that’s really just, it’s my mind tied to debt and how we’re trying to counter that every year with that growth. American Rescue Plan, 2021, 2022, our share was $2.29 million, came in 50% tranches. Last year, we had estimated a little bit below what we actually received, and this year, we’re receiving the $1.145 million. We are not anticipating the full amount, and the reason why is, if you use that full amount, you will have $1,001 make up next year of revenue loss. So we’re only anticipating $850,000. We’ll have a few hundred thousand from this year, there’s about $70,000 from last year. That will be a revenue source there, so it reduces that exposure next year for the revenue reduction that you’ll see in that line item. And then the reserve for municipal debt, that’s really all we have left in that line item. So we’ve been using our reserves. Two years ago, we were probably using about $1,002,500, I believe, in reserve amounts as a revenue source. We’re down to about $84,000 in what we’re using in reserves. That’s where we are. So it’s important to build up those reserves again. The main asset we have out there is the Firehouse and the other lots that we’re talking Property levies, this is just what we’re estimating, and again, what’s that showing with the school districts, a little bit around 2%. Our base has grown, so you just see a larger amount that’s raised through it as a result, and that’s where the county is showing a little bit of increase, but I think you’ll see a much, a decrease, so. But we won’t know that number until mid-year. see a much, a decrease, so, but we won't know that number until mid-year. And this, the 2% property tax levy cap, again, this is just a number that, by virtue of what we're allowed to do, what we're, what we're under, there's some exclude, you know, some of the exclusions that we have in that formula, but ultimately, we've been down, I think that our cap there is over $3 million, so in case there was ever a catastrophic emergency, we needed to raise revenue somehow, and, and certainly, there's the appropriation side of this, where there's, you know, there's a substantial cap amount there, but we're all under that this year. So just to kind of illustrate that number. And on to appropriation side of the budget. Total budget, 52,466. This just is sort of just the categories, the subcategories of the budget, municipal operation, other appropriations, that, that's what you find in, it's more statutoryal in how the state budget is set up, but this is what it consists of, and then the reserve for uncollected tax. And then this just breaks down by department and line item. Community, community services, the largest amount there is that curbside collection for recycling, that's 190 of that 338. Insurance, pension of that 178, that's the pension increase is about 147,000, a little bit over that. And then the rest of that is in the social security, just salary wages increase. And this is just the other appropriation side, and the reductions, but the debt service, that's your biggest number there. And then here's the cap, and I don't even know, Tammy, what's that cap, three-year cap number? It's pretty substantial, but this year, it's 3.2 million that we're banking. And now just personnel, we are showing an increase in personnel. We hired a part-time emergency court, management coordinator, our former managed, emergency manager coordinators over there are retired, so we hired a part-time one, but he was an employee at the time, so we, we decided we were going to hire a, a non-employee this year from the community, we did Joe Houck, and then we converted a sewer, a part-time sewer into a full-time. We do use it just, not just in sewer, but also for DCS in general. And then the positions in parking services, we, they existed a few years ago, we didn't fund those in 2020 and 2021, it's mainly in the parking services, the parking enforcement area, and that's sort of why, why you see that increase there. So that's the increase in the personnel. And here's the salary and wage breakdown, I'll just point out, Uniform Construction Code, separate, outside the budget, it's a trust fund that's set up, their fees fund their, all their employees and any, any expenses related to operating the uniform, the building area. So I show it, but it's really outside the municipal budgets, has no impact. And then the sewer and parking are funded by user fees. General fund is the only budget that, that you're paying through your taxes. This is the municipal operation, other expenses, just gives you some information, this year's increase is a little bit larger than the last, you know, average of the last four years, it's just giving your main, your largest line items in that other expense category. No change in transfer, there's recycling, curbside collection, again, police overall and other expenses is your largest, and then just your professional contract lines, there's just a net decrease there. And healthcare, we're keeping flat in the budget, we do have, we had a lot of changes in just the plan and, and type of coverage people have that impacts it, there's about 26 employees who don't take insurance that are eligible, that, that, there's the cost savings of 460, 56,000 plus, and then the employee contribution is up about 50,000 to 1.19 million. And then this is sort of the last of your other appropriations, just showing the increases in pension, and then the last with the debt service, which we'll continue to talk about when we get to the capital budget. We're probably paying down more this year in principle than we have, and, and I'll show you that slide in at least the last 12 years. This just gives you, so the equalized valuation, it's a three-year average, 19, 20, 21, of, each year, you have an equalized valuation, you take your base, you times it by the ratio number, which again, this is, that's the 42.03% I was talking about before, what they refer to as a ratio, and you're just, this is your three-year average, this year, for 2021, it was 7.6 billion. It's just showing the statutory drawing power, our net debt is at 69 million, that's up, I'm going to show you a slide of what, what's been going on there. Wait, I think I skipped over one, I don't know, okay. So this is, just one, I hadn't done this before, but I think it's important to kind of show you why we're, why the debt, the net debt percentage has been increasing, and just sort of what we've been paying off every year in principle. And as you can see, we're taking on, you know, our capital budget approvals have been significant. The two main years that you've seen, one was the community center back in 15, and then in 19, we had a substantial amount for the, the new firehouse. But over the years, I think many years ago, there was just, I think there was a, a big capital project deferral for, for the first, you know, between 2000, 2010, I think they started to fund a lot of capital projects for fields and, and certainly tatlock and memorial, all these other badly needed but important projects in the city, road projects, curbing, you can go back to the plans and see what, what was going on, but the reality is, we fund this with, with debt, and this is sort of what's been going on over the last 11 years. When, you know, I'd love to see more principal paid out in any given year than, and this is actually the first year, as you can see, where we're paying off more principal than taking on potential new debt, sort of where we would like to be for the next few years. So it's going to be a challenge with all the, the capital project needs, which I'll show toward the end of the presentation, but it gives you an understanding of why we're sort of, what's been happening, and the net debt impact. And this is, over the last, you know, 11 years, we've gone up $34 million in our net So honestly, just to finish with the capital budget plan, we started this process in December, we were at, I mean, overall, this was a, this will be a 4.28 million, we think we started at 6.2 million, so we, we had to go through a lot of cutting of projects, which Aaron wasn't happy about, but we'll get through it. Again, parking services, we're not spending any, this is the second year in a row we're at zero. And I'll just give you a quick breakdown of the numbers. The city clerk has a $50,000 amount that we, we have some other monies that we have from previous capital budgets, but we're going to, we're going to upgrade the system in, in this chamber, and we're going to try to get what we need and what the community is certainly calling for with trying to set up a hybrid system, but really, the first step is just to upgrade the system that I think is, what, 15 years old, Rosie? So we have money in the capital budget for that, and I'll just get into some of the more specifics, but, and this is just the sewer, and there's a lot of, like I said, I'll just go through the sewer again. And fire, bulk of this is in the alerting system, I can say that, you know, we're working really hard, and you'll probably see a resolution, we're, we're looking for, to raise money, I think VMS is certainly going to be stepping up with funding for us for the new firehouse, there's going to be some other potential donors, so we're really trying to offset any additional costs to this new firehouse, but this is sort of what we have in this this year. If for some reason, we raise a lot more money than we expect, and we can offset this alerting system, that would be great, we don't have to take out debt. And then in the police, it's just the vehicle replacement program we've had in place for many years, and this is what their capital budget request is. And on to community service, which is the bulk, and it's, you know, major improvements, this is just your quick outline of some of the, the road projects, and then we always have our micro paving, pedestrian safety improvements. And for more, greater detail, you can go to the, again, there'll be, there'll be a large budget document, there's a capital budget plan, you can see specific line items and what the costs are. And just some equipment. And then there's a lot of building upgrades, maintenance, that we're doing at the three main facilities, DCP buildings are some in, in, at Cornog, as well as the community center, small ones, but majority of them are here in City Hall, that we continue to upkeep this building, which is now 27 years old. Maybe playgrounds, so we initially had what we estimated a cost of about 600,000 in the preliminary budget, just given what we're trying to get to, to achieve with the capital budget number, we're going to fund 50% this year, we're going to certainly pursue grants for that, but we'll plan on the other 50% next year, and hopefully, we can get some monies to offset that cost. And then just sort of the normal maintenance for park furnishings. City clerk, shelving and storage, and then our audiovisual equipment replacement here. And then just, I'll end with, well, not done yet, but utility funds, and this is just the breakdown of that. And some of the streets that we're doing are through infrastructure replacement. And then I'm just going to end, I always like to end it on a positive note, but this year, when you're talking about debt, it's never great. So I'm just going to give, this is sort of the remaining portion, we have to do a six-year plan, this just gives you an overview. It's pretty hefty for some of these years. It's just the plan, there's a lot of capital project needs, we're showing the community, the council, what our needs are, but we have to prioritize, and we go through a process, and every year, we go through this process, and this is why it never really looks like this, but this, we just address the best we can, and considering what we're dealing with debt-wise, it's going to be a more challenging exercise the next two, three years. And then, so what this graph is, and I'm going to end on this. So your blue bar is what you currently have in long-term debt, and what that is corresponding amount is. The red bar is, we're going to be doing a, a bond issuance, our plan is mid-year, and we're going to be wrapping up 2019, 20, and 21 capital budget amounts that we have in short-term notes right now, and then we plan on including the 2022 amount, and that's what that red bar reflects. And then if we were to do all of what I just showed you in this next six year, you know, six, the remaining five years of that six-year plan, what that does to your debt service payments, and that's where you're now, you're getting into over a $7 million debt service payment annually. That is troublesome, we, we really can't be at that level. We're, we're going to be at the 6 million mark next year, we need to really prioritize some of the capital projects that we have, they're going to be much leaner than we have in the years past that I've illustrated, so that's going to be the great challenge, and that ultimately plays into your, your capital budget, what you see reflected in your operating budget is generally what you'll see in the capital improvement of, of fund line item, that's usually what we're funding 5% of our capital budget needs, and that, that's the impact to the operating budget, and then your debt service. And we know what our debt service is going to be through 2022, it's the 2023 and beyond, and when you start adding that all into this, this mix, that's, that's where you're going. So that's our great challenge, I don't like to end on this kind of note, but that's where we are, and that's it.
Thank you for that presentation, it was very enlightening, and we're going to, unless anyone has, on the dais has questions of a kind of clarifying nature, we're going to wait till the hearing on the budget to take questions.
Council President, the, the information that will be on the website will be pretty comprehensive, so I encourage anybody from the public, there's a lot of information, I threw a lot of information here that was presented tonight at you, but there's a lot more, encourage you to take a look at that document, hopefully, it answers any, any additional questions, may raise other questions, but that's, that's the process, and the public hearing will be scheduled for May 3rd.
May 3rd, and, and then at that time, everyone will have an opportunity to ask questions, so unless anyone on the dais has anything that needs clarified, we'll, we'll move on to, to our resolutions. We have two finance resolutions, and then we'll come back to public comments, it's a little different tonight. So Councilmember Vartan?
Well, thank you, Council President, this is Resolution Number 9558. This resolution introduces the 2022 municipal parking and sewer operating budgets. It also establishes a hearing date, which is this, the council meeting on Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022, 7:30 PM, in this room. In introduction of this budget, my comments fall into three categories. First, I express gratitude. Thank you Mayor Radist, Council President Fox, Councilmember Hairston, for your work on the Finance Committee. Thank you to Michael Rogers, Tammy Baldwin, and every member of the city staff. This is my third year as Finance Chair, and the third difficult budget year in a row that has been affected by the pandemic. Speaking directly to city staff, I and my esteemed colleagues here truly appreciate your continued grace under pressure, creativity, and dedication. Second, I review the process and provide context. So tonight, we've had the opportunity to learn from Administrator Rogers, the highlights of the operating budgets, as well as the capital budgets. The budget reports and the budget documents will be available to view on the city website tomorrow morning. In the next four weeks, until the budget hearing, every taxpayer will receive a copy of the budget snapshot in the mail. Then, per state law, 28 days from now, we will have a hearing at the council meeting on May 3rd, and that evening, we will vote to adopt this budget. As a reminder, what we are doing here with this budget is only one piece of the pie when it comes to the overall tax impact on residents of Summit. The schools make up half of the tax bill, the county, library, and school debt makes up about a third, and then the approximately 20% that's left is what the council can use to fund local government services. So for the average Summit household, the overall tax bill will increase by approximately 0.76%, or $140.56. These numbers are an estimate, and are likely to be adjusted slightly as the county tax equalization rates are finalized. Third, I ask for your involvement. I encourage every member of the community to review the budget, read the goals listed at the beginning, read the five-year trends, look at the numbers by department, feel free to call or email us with questions, and please attend the hearing. As I say, every year, there is no clearer statement of the values of a government than how it spends money. This year is no different, and extremely difficult choices were made here. This, this, I look forward to a robust conversation about this budget, and I will have a lot more to say about the budget during the hearing, but without further ado, I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
Okay, and then we're moving on to Finance Number Two, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President, this is Number 9559. This resolution authorizes the introduction of the 2022 Special Improvement District Budget and establishes a hearing date. The Special Improvement District is the central retail business district, better known as Summit's excellent downtown. The taxis, the, the taxes levied from that section of the city are managed by Summit Downtown, Inc., for the purposes of marketing and beautifying the area. The budget proposed by their board is also available on the website starting tomorrow morning, and the hearing on this budget will take place at the May 3rd, 2022 council meeting as well. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Okay, should we do the roll call, and then we'll have, have Clarifto come up and present briefly?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so could we have the roll call, please?
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, so, Mr. Toth, would you like to come up? You're welcome to sit. Would it be easier if you sat at?
Not at all.
Okay, whatever's easiest for you. Thanks for coming tonight.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Claire Toth, T-O-T-H, 11 Sunset Drive. I'm also Treasurer of Summit Downtown, Inc., and our budget for the year. Once again, it's a balanced budget. We always have that. Our, as, as Councilmember Vartan noted, our primary source of revenue is the assessment on the property owners within the Business Improvement District. That's just under $270,000. Our secondary sort, primary, second largest source of revenue, we run the largest farmer's market in the state. That has moved permanently to the parking lot number one, larger than, than its prior location. That's allowed us to expand the number of vendors. We've slightly lengthened the season. We've, we've raised some rates. So we've got significantly more money coming, projecting significantly more money coming in from, from the farmer's market. And we are coming back bigger and better than ever with, with events this year. Kicking off with the Family Fund Night in May, we've had, that's been on hiatus. We're expanding it, more events, more performers. Our second big downtown event is the music that we've had in the spring and now in the fall on the streets. We'll have several new musicians this year, and our primary constraint there is outdoor electric sources. We, we should get, have more musicians. In the fall, we're partnering again with the Visual Arts Center for Arts and Cars, taking over downtown for that. That's a popular event, particularly our Beer Garden, done in cooperation with Bull and Bear. Because we've had some leftover revenues in the past few, past few years, we're going to focus on placemaking and beautification downtown. We're partnering with the city and the Summit Public Art Foundation to rebuild and beautify the fountain in the promenade. We have entered into a contract with a professional placemaker that exists to examine Maple Street, when, how often the closures should happen, and we're going to involve all the stakeholders with that. We're doing more with murals. We're going to do more with other placemaking, with plantings. We're looking at a permanent fence around the farmer's market. And we've got a fabulous staff that had been working out of essentially a large walk-in closet for several years. We've got a larger office for them. We have had to hire new accountants, and I've got to say Tammy Baldwin has been fabulous, helping me on that process with, with some issues that have come up. And that's where we stand for the year. I would be happy to answer, to, to provide any clarification to council members.
Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Claire.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I don't, Council President, I don't have any questions. I just have to thank, again, the Summit Downtown, Inc. When I got to go to the League of Municipalities, the, the work you're doing on behalf of the business community is, is stellar, and we're just grateful for all you do to keep our downtown thriving and our businesses, even outside of that area, is remarkable. So just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you. It's fun to be a part of it.
Thank you for everything you do. And so this hearing will also be on May 3rd, and there'll be an opportunity-
Thank you.
-for questions. And we've really enjoyed the partnership with you.
Thank you, Claire.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
And happy anniversary.
Yep. And if you, if you want to head out-
To celebrate.
Yes. Okay.
Take your time.
Yep. So.
It's not going to be graceful.
That's okay. I think you did it very well. So moving on, we're now up to public comments. So, yes, come on up. So I ask you to, to restrict your comments to three minutes. State your name and address, please. And, thank you. And we'll, we'll reserve answers to all the questions after the, after the comments have been made, so.
Oh, good evening, Mayor Radist, and members of common council. And I'd like to congratulate the Finance Committee and Mr. Rogers for holding the annual budget increase within the 2% cap.
You're welcome.
I'd like to offer some broad brush comments about the financials of the Broad Street West redevelopment project. At your earlier meeting, Robert Powell of Nassau Capital Advisors explained the finances, but full disclosure to taxpayers requires more. As we know, the project is not a ratable, as Mr. Rogers referred to. We need those. There needs to be a review of the incremental costs to the city to provide police, fire protection, public education, waste disposal, and other public services resulting from the development. Together with the Powell analysis of the revenues, these costs should be projected for 30 years and discounted back to present value to enable a cost-benefit comparison. Second, a measuring stick is missing. We begin with a reasonable assumption of who would come in if the city were to amend the DRO instead of pursue a redevelopment project. From that assumption, one can project tax revenue and the cost of incremental public services discounted to present value. Once this analysis is available, taxpayers in common council can compare the cost benefit from regular tax revenues and development to pilot revenues and redevelopment. This council is not inextricably bound to the redevelopment option, and until you sign an agreement, you're free to walk away. If redevelopment is the way to go, I happen to like the mixed use with the retail on the ground floor and residential use above, much like the L&amp;M Toll Brothers' proposal. And I suppose my preferences are informed by my years of living in Germany. But it is clear to any layman, without the need for expert opinion, that the scale of the project is excessive, and the project inadequately provides for parking. That's why on February 9th, at the community center, I asked if it would be feasible to do away with the fifth floor. Mr. Abramson from Topology did not think so, but he said the economic analysis had not considered a scenario like that. I've not seen DRFPs or researched the law as to whether the L&amp;M Toll Brothers' proposal is a take-it-or-leave-it offer. If the L&amp;M Toll Brothers' proposal is just their opening gambit, you do not have to swallow it whole. A scaled-down version would transform the project from overdevelopment to smart development. I respectfully ask council to slow down the timeline to let other options receive consideration. Getting it right outweighs getting it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Next comment? Come on up.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Candace Wickie, C-A-N-D-A-C-E-W-I-C-K, 36 Chatham Road. I'm Executive Director of Continuum Arts Foundation, and I'm here tonight to let the council and all of you fine people know that we have 14 organizations here in Summit in the arts that have come together to put together an umbrella Summit Arts Festival, presenting events from May 1st through May 14th. And we're collaborating in the music, in the arts, in theater, in dance, want to showcase the best of the arts in Summit, and to really raise awareness, support, and appreciation for the arts. As you all know, arts is an integral in the makeup and the texture, the fabric of what makes Summit so special and so unique. And as you can imagine, the performing arts took a, a really significant hit. So all 14 of us are happy to still be alive. And the organizations that are collaborating are Continuum Arts Foundation, Visual Arts Center of New Jersey, New Jersey Dance Theater Ensemble, Reeves Reed Arboretum, Vivid Stage, Summit Playhouse, Summit Public Art, Summit Junior League, The Larks, the Children and Youth Choirs in New Jersey, New Jersey Conservatory of Music, Senior Sing, and the Civic Corral of New Jersey. And we are also hoping to engage many downtown businesses that might be willing to put some special offers up during the Arts Festival two weeks. And so that our objective is that as we move forward with this, this is our debut season. Oh, I have a visual for all of you. It's our debut season. But we're hoping to turn this into a destination two weeks that occurs each year annually here in Summit, and that it will garner more awareness, more support, not only from the Summit community, but surrounding communities, so that it is a place to come to, a place to go for the arts, and something that will bring us all together for many years to come. You received a packet, and it has the festival schedule on it, also has an invitation to a VIP reception that I hope you can all attend that we will be hosting at the Visual Arts Center. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in and sharing this information with us. And perhaps we can have the city communications officer share some of this online as well. So if you have anything electronic that you want to share with us.
We absolutely do. And we have summitartsfestival.com and a Facebook page, and I can send all the paraphernalia that they would like.
Would you send that to me, Candace? Because I'll be in, talking to the, in the office tomorrow, talking with the communications officer.
Yes, I will send it.
Send it to me, and she'll get on it.
Thanks, Nora.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you all so much.
Okay, any other comments? This is on items not on the agenda. Okay.
Hi, Rachel Kramer, 88 Elm Street. I just have a couple of quick questions, and I checked the FAQ on the website, and the answers weren't there. So I thought I would come to the source. There's been a lot of back and forth about the scale of the building. Are you able to confirm the height? I think that based on the schematic on the website, it's 500 feet long, but height measurements were not included. So that's number one. Since 2020, there were two public meetings with the developers. One was in May of 2021 via Zoom, and one was in February 2022. In addition to these two public meetings, there were several meetings between the Broad Street West developers and key stakeholders, including the HPC, Environmental Commission, Boards of the Y and Library, and reps from St. Teresa's. To date, we've only seen feedback from the HPC by way of their meeting minutes, or their plans to share feedback from other stakeholders. And as a result of these meetings, what, if any, modifications to the scale and design of the building were made? There's going to be another, also, in regards to the FAQ on the website, there's going to be another public meeting prior to the adoption of the redevelopment agreement. Are you able to clarify and confirm the purpose of this meeting? Is it to just answer outstanding questions, since it came up at the last council meeting that the design of the building is not changing? Also, a follow-up question to last month's council meeting. We know that a grocery store in Sub District 1 is no longer on the table because I think it was mentioned that the post office is not interested in moving at this time. Are there any updates as to where things stand with the parking lot between the Y and the library? Is the plan still to build 30 rental units there? Or will any binding agreements at this point only include Sub District 3? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other questions? We'll take all the answers at once, or comments.
Hi.
Good evening.
Evening. Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford Road. So I have a, a couple of questions about sewer. Is that on the agenda, or did we cover that already?
Sewer.
Just the sewer system here, but that was on the resolution, like I'm.
I don't think we have a sewer system.
That was just on the, that was on the resolutions. Am I looking at this right? I can ask a question about that, right?
Sewer utility budget is on the resolution.
Right.
Right. So can I ask?
It's just a sewer question generally, yes.
It's about the sewer line and stuff. Can I ask about that?
Yeah, sure.
Is that okay? I just want to see if I-
Absolutely, yep.
Make sure I'm not asking at the wrong time.
Nope, that's fine.
Okay, so.
Thank you for asking. Yep.
Sewer. Okay, here we go. So in the 1990s, on Broad Street, there was a mean sewer rupture. So my question kind of revolves around going with all of the building that's going on around here, not just Broad Street West development, but stuff that's happening in neighboring towns, projects that might be happening down on Morris, and just all of the building that's going on here in town. I know that we partner with New Providence. I might not get this clear. So if I'm, if I'm off a little bit, I apologize. So we, we partner with New Providence on the sewer waste management, correct? Am I correct on that? And then that all goes into Elizabeth?
Yep.
It all goes into one melting pot of Elizabeth, right? So we connect with New Providence?
We basically take New Providence as parts of, a portion of New Providence's sewage, and then we take it, we send it to-
To Elizabeth, right?
Yes.
So my concern, and this is where I'm kind of thinking, is that we're all building, and we all have to meet affordable housing. So all of these towns, we have, we are, we've done a great job here in Summit, so I'm very thankful for that, that we are so good here in Summit. But a lot of the other neighboring towns haven't. So all these other towns are doing this major building. And now I see the sewer on here, and, you know, we are doing these 400, $600,000 to fix the sewer lines. I think that's what it was, if I'm correct, if that was the right number. Are we doing, when we do this construction, are we taking into account all, in the future, let's say 10 years down the road, that our sewer lines are going to be able to handle this? Are we going to have another 1990s explosion like we did on Broad Street and have a major millions of dollars that we're going to have to take on as a city and not be able to handle it? That's a big concern of mine, and I think we have to look forward down the future of what our, our lines look like. And then, and then Elizabeth and all of our neighboring towns have to say, can Elizabeth handle that? Or it's like a tsunami effect. And then all of a sudden, poor Elizabeth has this. So that's, that's a concern of mine. The other thing, have we done a cap, you mentioned some, doing some fundraising, a capital campaign for the firehouse. I think we did a capital campaign for the community center. You know, this should have been brought up maybe two years ago or something. We have a lot of wealth in this town. I think we need to get our neighbors involved. There's a lot of debt. And I know that's something that we've talked about is Broad Street West, like we're in debt, we have to do this. But I think we need to get the town involved and say, we need the money. Let's raise the money for this firehouse. Let's get somebody's name on that door. There's, how many doors, bays going into this firehouse? Let's raise some money. I know we can do it as a town, and if we pull together, we can find the funds. I think we have to, like, we have to come together as a community. And I think we need to do it sooner than later. And looking at this presentation, which was great, I think we have to get people involved. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gagnon. Any other comments from members of the public? Come on up, Mr. McGoye.
I don't have anything really paired. Kevin McGoye, 113 Woodland Avenue. The one thing I want to get on the record is, I think the Broad Street West project is described as a, a project that's been in the work for four years, and it's had a lot of engagement. I think I've said this to you before, that the proposed project deviates so far from the redevelopment plan that was passed in 2019. I don't think it's fair to say that this project has been in the works for four years. I think the first time the public was shown this project at all was May of 2021, less than a year ago. We still don't know the height and elevations of the building. So to say that all the information is out there, I think is facetious and a little misleading. I don't really understand why there isn't more public engagement. I met with Mr. Rogers today for an hour and a half. I think I've expressed to all of you my opinion of the great fiscal need for this and the great fiscal benefits. And I promise you, my conversation with Michael did not change that. If actually, I realized there were some things that actually it's not even as fiscally as beneficial as I expected. One thing that, that I think Jim talked about in the costs that aren't studied are the costs of the schools. And that is the biggest cost associated with this building. It's the biggest, biggest risk associated with the building. There's been no formal fiscal impact analysis. That's a fact. So you have not studied both the costs and the big, the biggest costs and the benefits associated with this. You're, you're making statements to the public. You're, you're making statements to the public. I'm just going to read from your, your form response to people. "I am quite certain that it will bring great benefits to the residents of Summit. One important thing to understand is the city has a very serious revenue problem that is not going away without effort on our part. Either we move forward with this project, or we will have to significantly increase and decrease services." You will not have to significantly increase people's taxes if this does not go through. That's, that's a fact. I don't know if you can play in, or.
I don't want to go back.
Right, okay.
Yeah, there is no.
So that's, that's not, that's not an accurate statement, and you're scaring people by saying that. I mean, we know, first of all, you can't even raise taxes more than 2%. So, you know, and, and the numbers associated with it are so tiny in comparison to the overall tax levies, that, that's just not reality. The other thing that Michael Rogers pointed out to me today, which I thought was pretty interesting, I hadn't even thought of, is that this building can't even begin construction until the firehouse is done and moved. So this artificial timeline that you have of, we have to get this through, we have to get this through, I don't think is accurate. There's no reason why you need to approve this. We have time, they can't start construction. The revenues from this won't even come in until 2026, 2027. So any budgetary problems you have between then aren't going to be solved by the, the pilot program revenue associated with this.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
Okay.
Your three minutes are up. You can finish your thought.
Yeah, I just think that, like, the reality thing is, I want you guys to explain why all the information isn't out there in terms of the height. The scale's obviously a massive problem with this. This thing doesn't adhere to, the redevelopment plan certainly doesn't mirror what the master plan wanted. I worked on the land use committee, you can just ask me if you have a question. And, and like, I also, I'm quite concerned with the way that some of the peoples, people have genuine questions and concerns about this, and I am very concerned that some of those are not being taken seriously. And I have reasons for this concern, I have reasons for this concern. It's been stated to me that some of these people don't know what they're talking about in more colorful language, merely because they cut and pasted something from a form letter that helped them articulate, and some of them, like one of my friends is, you know, this guy's a professional.
Your three minutes is up.
Okay.
I was being generous to let you finish, but I think it's time for you to wrap up.
All right. I'm just saying, like, it's, it's obvious to me that, for whatever reason, this is being pushed along, there's a lot of misinformation and going on, doesn't make sense to me. I think you guys should slow it down and be open and get public engagement. You have more than enough time. And if there, if this is really great, it's going to sell itself. You're not going to need to just say, it's going to be greatly beneficial to some residents. You could just lay it out there. Everybody wants great, I want great, I hope I'm wrong. I haven't seen anything, the more I look, the more I'm pretty convinced that I'm correct. And the one, the one selling point on this is, you're saying financial, which is why I focus on it.
We're now just five minutes. I'm asking you to stop, please. Other people are waiting. Thank you. Good evening. Did you have a written statement for us?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Raddus, Council President Fox, and members of Summit Common Council. I wish to thank and congratulate you for your efforts to plan the redevelopment of the land that the present Summit Firehouse sits on. I'm sure you've devoted many hours to this endeavor. However, I feel that in its, in its present form, this is too large a project for Summit. Many of us moved to Summit with small-town feel and to get away from the congestion of a large city. It will add to the overcrowding and traffic delays in the surrounding streets. I am therefore pleading with you to reduce the scope of this project for the benefit of future generations living in Summit. Thank you for your time and consideration. John DiSocio, 17 Styles Road, Summit.
Thank you, Mr. DiSocio.
And I made sure I, it was brief.
That was very brief, thank you.
I didn't want to take up too much of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Okay, are there any other comments from members of the public? Okay. Good evening, Ms. Davis.
My name is Karen Davis. I live at 44 Ridge Dale Avenue. First, I would like to thank the mayor and common council members for their fiscal responsibility in managing our city's finances in a way that will keep our taxes as low as possible. I looked over my notes from some of the meetings I've attended recently, and it says that when we analyze, when we have the analysis of the Broad Street West development, that a typical rate of return for a project like this in the state of New Jersey would be 10 to 15% rate of return for the developer. And apparently, our mayor and common council were able to negotiate with the developers here a rate of return of 11%, 11.37%, my notes say, which is toward the low end of what's typical for a rate of return on a development like this. So that means that the developer finds Summit so desirable a place to build this building that they are willing to accept a rate of only 11% when they could have as high a rate as 15%. The other thing I found in my notes is that the acreage under consideration in Sub District 3 is about 1.5 acres, and the developer is willing to pay $8 million for only 1.5 acres of land. That seems like a lot to me. And one of the comments was made during the analysis, that that's really, really a very good price for this land. It is a problematic piece of land. There's a gas line that runs under it that has to be removed before any development of any sort could take place on that land, and the developer is going to incur the cost of moving the gas line in addition to paying $8 million to the town. So it seems to me that this financial structure of the $8 million, coupled with the 30 years pilot, which, again, in my notes, looks like it would bring in the city more than half a million dollars per year for 30, for all of the 30 years. So the financials of this are something that make me feel comfortable about the mayor and common council trying to manage our taxes in a way to keep them as low as possible. The other comment I would make about managing our taxes to keep them as low as possible is that this shows that our mayor and common council are dedicated to Summit's homeowners, because in keeping our taxes as low as possible, that helps our home values remain high. I looked it up, and I found that in the last year, home values in Summit rose by about 11%, which was higher than the county average. Hearing that helped me feel confident about the management of our town. I'm very grateful to the principles of financial responsibility and dedication to Summit's homeowners shown by our mayor and common council. Beginning the construction of Broad Street West will be a happy day for all who believe in keeping our taxes as low as possible and our property values high. Thank you.
Thank you. Are any other comments from members of the public? I'm gonna, we're gonna, that's it for the comments here? I'm gonna, we're gonna take the email comments now.
Yes, Council President.
And then, then we'll address, should we address these first? Would that be, so we have less to keep track of?
Yeah.
That might be simpler.
Totally up to you.
I think that'd be simpler.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to go back and, all right, so Mr. Bennett had some questions about the costs of the project. I'm going to turn those over to the city administrator if he'd like to just address that briefly.
Sorry, which?
Yeah, you, you're in a stupor after the presentation, right? Yeah.
There was a civic comment.
There was a question about the costs projected, that, you know, police, fire, sewer, all that, all that stuff. I think we've talked about this before.
Yeah, I, I, look, I understand some of how, when, when you're doing a redevelopment project, when you're, there's certainly a methodology out there for annual service charges that municipal service costs, and when you're looking at what could potentially, what that, how they allocate, and there's, there's different multiplier kind of proportional valuation type of methods out there. I can go through a long discussion and thoughts about what I think of those, because when you realistically look at what a project like this would generate in new costs, it does not come anywhere near, when you go through this academic exercise of using some of these, you know, methodologies. And I think anybody who has looked at this has been, had any experience with what they do project out, and I understand why you do that over time, but where our focus, the reason, what, what we hired Bob Powell to do was to analyze the deal terms of this project, not to create a document that, quite frankly, didn't provide any value, mainly would show a pilot agreement scenario for whatever is being done. That, in my mind, is what you saw in the presentation, what was done, what was more valuable, and what he provided the municipality was to provide an objective analysis of the pro forma, what the, what the developer is presenting. That's what he presented on. It wasn't to produce a fiscal impact study, say, what people have referred to, and have some of this municipal service cost methodology that's used. I know what it is, I've looked at it. I, you can basically do it just based on what I, I've seen done. And honestly, how this practically plays out is that it doesn't come anywhere near what you're projecting, but it's been a part of the exercise and part of what, what developers would typically hire somebody to do. There's, there's a few different consultants out there that have done it. We can debate about the usefulness of it another time. As far as, you know, just, I don't want to go into any discussions about what I met with, with Mr. McGoye today, but we talked a little bit about what, what, what this project was. There's a lot, I thought it was a very good conversation, thank you for your time. So I won't go into that. But the thought about not raising taxes more than 2%, yes, there is a municipally tax levy, property tax levy cap, but as you know, there's, there's bank amounts that are there, nobody likes to go, we certainly want to keep within that 2%. It's becoming more challenging every year, and when you look at what the, what the projected costs are in this community, it's getting harder and harder. That's the whole point of what we look at in our responsibilities when we're looking at projects. It's a unique opportunity, what Broad Street presented, we own a good portion of the property there, we're trying to create economic development, we're trying to generate new revenues for this municipality to utilize, minimize the tax burden. That's what it's been about. Certainly, there are other considerations, I understand it, I think we've been listening. It's not where we're always going to agree on what has been happening, what, what the scale, that those are some of what has been generated, I understand. I'm not sure if there's anything else that I can answer, Council President, but.
I think that was it on, on that one. There was something about make, taking the, the funding, projecting it out for 30 years and.
Yeah, that's some of sort of what that, that municipal service cost exercises, I mean, you've seen.
Right.
And certainly, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to have a conversation, I will have a conversation with, with the financial advisor, I think there's something we can look at. But again, I, I just don't hold a lot of regard for what that type of academic methodology is used, and I think people have been doing this for a long time, certainly look at that, and I think they would share the same opinion. But I do understand the cost side of things, and we can certainly identify certain costs like tipping fees and things, the garbage that goes into the stream, but we can also determine what that is. But I think that's a worth, we'll go through the exercise, we've been focused mainly on the revenue, but I understand the other side of it. The reason why it hasn't been the focus is because, quite frankly, there really isn't anything. When you look at from an operations standpoint, we're not hiring any new personnel for this, we're not buying any new equipment, there is, it's not where you're building out a completely new neighborhood, where some of that is definitely more important, and it's, and I know the debate around schoolchildren, and it is a debate, and it's, frankly, you're only going to know until you know and what the actual numbers are. But the numbers typically, there's enough historical data there in New Jersey and what the projections are, and what Dr. Powell used, that methodology is, is as reliable what's out there, whether it's 24, 40, or 10, everybody can sit there and speculate on it. It's hard to predict, but that's sort of where you are. And it's, it's, this thing I know has been a big issue in the community, I understand it, it's hard to determine. But the cost side, I understand, we'll try to come up with something. We were not complete with this process. We took a snapshot in time and tried to present it to the community to give you where we were with this. There was no report that was necessarily generated for it. There was a lot of analysis that was done through our negotiations with the financial advisor, there was a lot of modeling going on, that's what we have. You've seen information on the schoolchildren. I think there's more that can be done. We are not done with this process. I think we'll have something to provide the community in the future.
Thank you.
I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so we're moving on to Ms. Kramer's questions. As far as the scale of the building, the height is 62 feet at Cedar Street. The grade goes down along Broad Street by eight feet, so at the corner of Morris, it is actually a little bit, it is higher, it's probably, it's not quite 70 feet, from what I've been told. The five, the.
Where, where is it 70 feet?
At the, at the end by Morris Avenue. It doesn't go entirely to Morris Avenue, but that end, because if you look at the way Broad Street, it goes downhill, basically. So there's an eight-foot change in grade, and there's the garage opening on that end. So, but as far as the length, it's not 500 feet, the way it's, you could look at a schematic on the website, and it is 346 feet. If you're getting 500 feet, you're going around the corner. But you're going around the corner to do that, so, just to set the record straight. As far as the, there were not, as far as I know, not written documents. The HPC wrote that memo. The other, the, I don't think that our planner wrote any documents, I think what happened was those thoughts were incorporated into the redevelopment plan as she met with the different stakeholders groups. So I, I have not seen any memos to that effect. And the purpose of the next meeting, we're still working on determining what the next meeting will be and what scope it will take, so stay tuned. The answer on the post office is, the post office is not going to, is not interested in moving, so we will have a smaller, we could potentially have a smaller store, grocery store, but not a full-size grocery store. The parking lot in the Y is, is still up for discussion, what, between, the parking lot between the Y and the library, so that's still up for discussion as well. So I think that covers everything that we, that you.
There was my last question, which is, does the agreement that's going to be adopted, will that only cover Sub District 3?
Oh, that's what that note, I wrote a note that I didn't understand what it meant. It will only cover Sub District 3, yes. And now, Ms. Gagnon had that question about the sewer, I'm going to turn that over to you, Mr. Strager.
I could answer it.
Sewer?
Yeah, so.
Okay. I don't usually think of the local as the first answer.
We represent a number of authorities. So.
Yeah.
Every sewer system has capacity that's, that's regulated by DEP, so you cannot overbuild a sewer. The sewer has to be able to sustain the capacity. And one of the, one of the issues that they look at is, you go into the joint meeting of Union Essex County, which is a fairly big regional sewer system, but each town and each municipality has capacity, and they can't go above that capacity. If, if it's going to be above it, you have to upgrade the entire sewer, sewer system. I could tell you that all that's studied by developers, by the DEP, there's all kinds of regulations that you have to, and permits you have to get to hook up to a sewer system so that you don't overload a sewer system. And that's done, and that's an issue that's happening across the state. There's another municipality in Essex County that their sewer capacity can't handle it, and they're going to have to upgrade their entire system. They have a standalone sewer system because they do not have the capacity to withstand the affordable housing that's going into that community. But I can tell you, joint meeting, PVSC, these are huge sewer systems that do have capacity that can handle excess flow, or additional flow. That's what it is, it's flow, it's the flow of waste, which is really liquid, water.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything else to add, Mr. Strager? Or that pretty much covers it?
No.
Yeah, I mean, maybe you could talk about the maintenance plan and what we do to keep the sewers kind of.
That was good. Can I go home? You can take all the.
I, I applied for the engineering job, just so we know.
Okay.
You're hired.
So, yes, we, the city actually has capacity rights with joint meeting, which is 7.5 million gallons per day. We, we average about five right now, so we do have capacity there. It won't be an issue. A development such as Broad Street West that will be over 8,000 gallons per day, which it will, will need a Treatment Works application from the DEP, which would trigger a lot of review by both joint meeting, City of Summit. We average about five right now, so we do have capacity there. It won't be an issue. A development such as Broad Street West that will be over 8,000 gallons per day, which it will, will need a Treatment Works application from the DEP, which would trigger a lot of review by both joint meeting, City of Summit, to check capacity. Now, on a local level, do the lines themselves have specific capacity? So at Broad Street, yes. That's kind of the beginning of the shoot, right down to joint meeting. That's probably the highest capacity pipe we have, so that's okay. But there are parts in town we would not want, even a minor development, because the pipes are lower, flat, or smaller, or they would be required to upgrade that as part of their application, so. In terms of maintenance, yes, the system is not getting any younger. I mean, we're replacing it where we can. So the 1990 sewer collapse was an aging pipe that did collapse, and it was a miserable experience for those who lived through it. We have TV inspected that trunk line numerous times since then, and it is doing well. And we, right now, are in, I believe, four or five phase, the fifth phase of peeping and cleaning all the sewers in the city, and replacing them and upgrading them as we go. So we are very proactive with maintenance right now. If something's identified as part of this development, that there is some line somewhere that needs to be upgraded, it would be required as part of their board approval. But otherwise, we do put a lot of importance on proactively maintaining the system. We do have the capacity, and at Broad Street West, we should be fine specifically there with the sewage increase.
Thank you, Mr. Strager. Okay. So I think the other, the other things were comments, not questions, so I think we're ready to move on to the...
Okay. The first email received was from Marilyn Zaka.
Okay, so we'll resort to the...
Some of the emails, just to explain what they're doing, some of the emails that have come in are pages long, and because you're all required to be limited to three minutes, we're timing the reading of the emails, just to make it, you know, fair for everybody. Just want to explain what they're doing.
Thank you, Mary. Thanks.
Marilyn Zaka of Ashland Road writes, "We would like to express our disapproval with current plans for Sub-District Three. We formally request that council provides alternative design options for this project. The following issues need to be addressed: density, size, parking, traffic, and complete financial impact analysis inclusive of any costs the city will incur. We know that there has been some response from the council that the review has been going on for some time and that these issues have been addressed, when in fact, many of the issues have been relegated to future review. As an example, the lack of adequate parking has been raised several times, and the council has said that this will be reviewed in the future, when in fact, we never get clear-cut statements of how it is being resolved. This leads many of us to be concerned that the council wants to be disfavoring the use of automobiles and parking in Summit. Additionally, the council asks for comments, and yet, when people raise concerns about the size of the building, council states that this has already been resolved and will not," in caps, "be renegotiated." In that, if that is the case, why ask for comments from the citizens of Summit? The comments from the council that they have excellent predictions on the number of schoolchildren and the traffic flow rings hollow when the traffic study only covered residential trips and ignored business trips as well as moving vans in the area. With regard to the schools, the estimates of children living in this project seems woefully inadequate. While the council continues to want to deal with the project of Sub-District Three as a standalone, it is clear that Sub-District Three is part of an overall plan that will encompass at least two more significant developments, and there needs to be a forum where all of these plans can be discussed at one time so that citizens will have a clear understanding of what will happen in our city. A series of projects of this magnitude in Summit is of such a size and importance that the council needs to keep an open mind to make changes or alter course as necessary. Finally, as a matter of process, at several meetings that we have listened to on Zoom, the council is constantly making comments that we need to move on to address other items on the agenda, indicating that they would like to close comments and questions on this project. This is insulting to the citizens of Summit, and the council should allow adequate time for all questions and comments on the Broad Street West redevelopment without rushing people, and should in fact set aside meetings which are solely devoted to these redevelopment projects without any extraneous items on the agenda at town meetings. We hope you will take these questions and comments with seriousness and respect that they deserve."
Is that the only one we have?
No, we have three more.
Okay.
The next email is from Neil Trangucci of Hillcrest Avenue. He says, "I am a 30-year resident of Summit. I pay, I have paid very high property tax my entire time in the city. I have raised only one issue with the common council in those 30 years, the creation of a permanent respectable dog park for Summit residents. I sent a version of the seed mail to all in January and got only a thoughtful constructive response from Greg Vartan, but I have seen no progress in any of the subsequent agendas for the common council. I agree with Mr. Vartan's point that such a facility must be cost-effective and not disruptive to the residential neighborhoods. I suggested that an area that would not disrupt neighborhoods and might be appropriate is the large field deep in Bryant Park back near the stream. It is a large, unencumbered area surrounded by wooded space, and is not visible from any residential properties or street traffic. It also seems to be a wasted space, as I have never seen anyone using it. The walking path circumnavigates the area in question, and it seems to have no other use. Like many, many Summit residents, I have a dog. He and I love going to a legitimate dog park each day. It amazes me that Summit has no such permanent facility for its dog-owning residents. I drive 15 minutes each way to either Southmount Reservation or Echo Lake Park to access a decent dog park. On my daily trips to these parks, I meet countless Summit residents who make the same 30-minute round trip every day. The unanimous opinion among these dog owners is that there is a disservice to residents for a community like Summit to have no dog park. I fail to understand how South Orange and Cranford and many other communities can justify having a dog park while Summit cannot. I recognize that Summit has made a half-hearted attempt to test the concept of a dog park at the train sta, at the transfer station. In fact, I eagerly brought my dog to this location in the hopes that it would lead to a more appropriate and permanent solution. However, the hours of operation were too restrictive. Small footprint was inadequate for dogs to run or to accommodate more than a few dogs, and the mulch-covered ground was a problem in wet and dry conditions. As a result, I and many others stopped going due to the inferior conditions and went back to the long-distance parks. I've heard nothing more about whether the city considers the temporary dog park as a success or not. But in my opinion, the effort was poorly planned and doomed from the start. It was not a representative test case. I urge you to consider finding space and budget to provide this service which addresses the daily needs of a wide swath of Summit residents."
Shy, three minutes.
People must be practicing at home.
We have two more. The next one is from Doris Perrone. Forgive me for the mispronunciation, Hillcrest Avenue. She has a series of questions. The first one, she's a Summit resident since 1980. The first question, "How much from the sale of the fire station property will cover the cost of building a new fire station?" Second question, "How much will the traffic impede the ability of the fire trucks to advance from its new location?" Third question, "Was the decision to sell the fire department's property to a developer made for budgeting concerns?" And then she closes with, "Thank you for addressing my questions," and acknowledged her email. And the last one is from Liz Barrett on Ken Place Boulevard. She says, "I grew up in Summit, as did both of my parents, and I moved my family back here almost 10 years ago so that my three kids could also grow up here. I am not anti-development. I am very concerned about the Broad Street West project as currently configured. I am hopeful that you can hit pause, consider the growing bipartisan concerned feedback from residents as we learn about the surprising scale of the project, and find a way to make this something the community welcomes. Surely, this is possible. I recently became aware of the Historic Preservation Commission's objections to the current plan. Many of the Historic Preservation Commission's concerns resonate with me, including building bulk, visual bulk, visually overwhelming, creating safety and parking concerns, developer-first approach, responsibility to complement and blend, too large and uniform, and should be a four-story building." I'd add, I remember a few years ago, when the city was calling for resident input on what they'd like to see in this redevelopment, my daughter's peers at Lincoln Hubbard wrote to Mayor Rades requesting that a movie theater be part of the redevelopment, and they were excited to receive encouraging feedback. They'll be disappointed to learn that this project does not include a theater, but that it will add more traffic to the already dangerous Frogger-like car pedestrian situation near the school they now all attend at the Walton C. Johnson Summit Middle School. I know that they, you are receiving many emails questioning this project. I hope that you will hear the residents of Summit whom you have volunteered to serve and represent, even if it means going back to the drawing board on a plan you were hoping was ready to go. To me, that would show true leadership."
And that's it? Okay.
Council President?
Yes.
I know it's public comment. Are we allowed to ask a clarifying question? There's just some answers that I had a couple on. I don't know if that's typical.
Yeah.
They're important.
Okay.
Okay. I'll just make it really quick. So the rate of return, I think it was commented that it was 11%, but I just want to make sure, isn't it, is it 10% rate of return?
No, no, 11.39, that's correct.
Okay, so they're not, we're not talking about the 10%?
That's not the pilot. It's the, it's the rate, the internal rate of return.
Okay, that's a clear question. And the other question I had was, the letter, for the agreement is for district, Sub-District Three, but in the letter of intent, there's an 18-month period where the developer still is in contract with us in some form or fashion. Is that correct? I just want to make sure I understand that.
There is, the letter of intent is a non-binding document, but there is sort of an, it's a letter of agreement, it's an understanding, but the, but what, but there is, the redevelopment agreement will be Sub-District Three. It will not contain those other parts, as far as I know.
But it's, was it, my, my understanding was that the letter of intent for the 18 months was that we agree on a non-binding basis that we'll continue to keep talking about the other parts.
It's the same way that you designate a redevelop, or anyone's, where either side is free to walk at any time, really, with the redevelopment.
Right, but the agreement's just Sub-District Three.
Okay. And then, do we get the, so for the agreement, is there, can we safely say that we won't vote until like mid-May on the actual agreement? And will the numbers that everybody's talking about, the expense numbers, is that part of the agreement? And I'm asking this question because I have no idea. So is that part of the agreement?
The expense numbers, you mean the costs to the city?
Yes.
That's not part of the agreement, but, and we, you know, at this point, I think it's pretty safe to say that we will not be voting at the...
Before mid-May.
Until like mid-May?
That would be the earliest, you know, the next meeting, we're obviously not voting on it, and then the meeting after that is the budget, so no. You know, I, there will not, there'll be plenty of time. It won't come as a shock to people when we're ready. We're still working, there's still things we're working through, so...
And as Michael said, he was working, we're working on these, these costs the city is going to have for this project are not massive costs, but he's working on the numbers, and we'll put them out, we'll get them, for sure.
But it's not part of the agreement?
No.
No, it doesn't go into the agreement. There is a provision in the agreement, there's a, it's called an administrative fee, which is also called a municipal services fee, and there's a, it's 2% of the 10% pilot that they will pay to us that covers the cost of things like tipping fees for garbage, or, you know, recycling costs. So, you know, so it's, so that does cover some of the costs as well. Does that answer your, you have more?
One last question.
I thought maybe you were doing the threes like Greg.
Almost, yeah. So, okay, so when Michael was saying, because it's not a new neighborhood technically, so I guess, in some ways, it could be a new neighborhood, because it has, if we do do a grocery store, if we do some parking, if we do the building. So I just want to make sure I'm totally clear on that, because I kind of see it as a new neighborhood downtown in of itself, because it's self-containing. So for me, the expenses, in my mind, because I'm new at this, my mind is, is that there potentially could be a cost to police and fire, because there is more development in there, and I know this is an individual, through you, Council President. It's its own development, but we have other development happening. So how do, I guess to me, I'm trying to think around, we have a new neighborhood happening, and there are costs associated with that, and there's also other development happening too. So I'm trying to understand that, so I don't know, tonight is the night, but maybe you can answer that question.
So, Council President, just a clarification of my, when I said it's not, my, my thought about a neighborhood is like a completely, many, many new homes, many new, you know, and not that what you're saying isn't true. I think what the whole, one of the objectives of what we were trying to do was to actually create a new neighborhood down here. What I'm envisioning is far grander in scale of what I would see creating some real, actual costs to the community. Looking at this project, are we going to have to hire new police? Are we going to have to hire new fire for this project, for just this purpose? No. Not going to go with the school discussion. I, I'm just focusing on the municipal cost. So that, that's what I'm talking about. If we were building these, you know, much like grander neighborhood, and you were building many, many new homes, streets, all new infrastructure, then there's some legitimate discussions on real costs to the municipality. So that's sort of what I was talking about, Council.
Council President, too, I'd like to make some comments in regard to the...
This is really supposed to be public comment period, so I think...
No, no, no. Council President, if through you, I would just like to make sure that comments that were raised by the audience don't go unaddressed, because they will give the wrong impression. And so I just wanted to bring one to your attention.
Yep, I have one on my list, too.
Oh, okay, so that's what I wanted to make sure...
Is it Ms. Gagnon's question about the capital, that one I missed, because we were so busy talking about the sewers, we got so excited about that, but we will be having a capital campaign for the firehouse, and I don't know if the mayor or Chief Evers would like to just say something about that?
So we've begun, and it's not for, there was, the city approved the major portion, vast majority, of the cost of the firehouse. But there are certain items that were not within the budget, and we have begun a capital campaign to raise those funds through individuals in the community. There is no way, and I've worked on a lot of capital campaigns in this town in 30-some years, there's no way, as generous as this community is, that we were going to raise $16 million for a firehouse. Just wasn't going to happen. It took us years to raise the little over $1 million for the community center, and the city paid for the majority of that, which was six and something, six and change for the community center?
Our portion was about a little over $4.5 million.
$4.5.
The overall project was six and a half.
Right.
And then there was about a million and a half raised, a little over a million and a half.
Right, it was a million and a half raised, and that took at least three years. So, yes, we're making progress. We've just started, but I'm confident that we will raise the money we need, and, but I'll be calling you.
Okay, so I think...
Council President, the one other, and I know Mr. Bennett has left, and I know you, our administrator, did an excellent job, but one thing I want to make sure gets lifted up, use the term overdevelopment versus smart development, and I think it's worth raising how thoughtful, from master plan to redevelopment plan, planning, and throughout Summit's investment in sustainability and all of that, it is a part of the project, and it's a part of how this town operates, and explicitly how we've gone into this redevelopment project. And so I think I appreciated the specifics, but that is something that I am concerned about, people getting discouraged who did weigh in early on in thinking that we're moving away, and we're not. These principles are guiding everything that's happening. These principles are guiding everything that's happening, smart, and, and smart development is absolutely fundament, fundamentally involved throughout, so I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Harrison. And, yeah, there was another question about the movie theater, for example, and that was something that I think a lot of people wanted, but when we started having conversations with the redeveloper, we learned that it was not financially feasible, that people want a much bigger movie theater than what we would have a footprint for, they want something like a multiplex type thing, and people stopped going to the local in-town movie theaters, and COVID was really the final nail in the coffin for, for the idea of a movie theater in town.
Yeah, and four years ago, when I got the letter from the children with the signatures, I, I wrote back and told them that if we had someone who came to the town who could, had a feasible plan for a movie theater, and would, thought they could, you know, make a profit having a movie theater, and there's enough interest in the town, that it's something the town would not be opposed to, but there has been no one that has come forward, or we've even, and we've even, we've looked at it, where's Beth? We talked about some other smaller theaters back a couple of years ago, and then, as you said, Council President, once COVID came, it's a death knell on, on movie theaters, and now, and plus with the, the rise of so much streaming available. But that doesn't mean we can't have, we've talked about, you know, who knows? We don't know exactly what's going to be there ultimately, but, you know, maybe a, a community, small community space where you could do, you know, small things, I, I don't know. That's, that's far too down the road in, in the weeds, so.
So, I guess the next one is the dog park, and I don't know, Mr. Schreger, would you like to address where we are on the dog park, please?
Thank you, through you, Council President. Last year's dog park, and we should point out, was a pilot program. We used resources we had, mostly, very little cost to establish that, just to, to see how we could do it in the space we have, so. On the next council meeting, if it's not April 19th, it might be May 3rd, there will be a resolution requesting a more permanence to the dog park at the transfer station, so requesting an agreement from the county. The person I mentioned, you know, Bryant Park, which, if we were to request it, we, we have no agreement or rights to Bryant Park. If we would request it to the county, the county could pursue it and create a county dog park, the city, we have no control over it, probably wouldn't have to contribute to it, and it's something we could pursue, but we do have the transfer station agreements in place with the county to use it for transfer station composting and passive and active recreation. So, that's easier for us, because unfortunately, we are not blessed with an abundance of vacant land we can use for either sports or, or even more passive recreation, so that is what we're looking at in the future. And if it was done with more permanence, yes, absolutely, we would try to do it with better materials and, and make it a friendlier dog park in the space that we're confined to, but we definitely would like to make it the best we can.
Thank you, Mr. Schreger. And then there were questions from Doris Carone. Mr. Rogers, I'm going to ask you to answer the, the, they want, she wanted to know how much from the sale of the fire, how the, the sale of the firehouse is going to, the property is going to pay off the, the new firehouse budget, and I believe you did touch on that briefly, but how are, how are we going to handle that $8 million? Where are we going to put it?
Right, so, we transact, we close, that money, money's transferred in, it, it will go into our reserve for municipal debt, and it's not necessarily just about the firehouse. I know that's sort of a, something we talk about, it's the general debt service that we're providing as a revenue source in our budget to offset any future increases in debt service. Certainly, a $15 million amount is significant, we sort of know what that, you were just funding that solely, you're looking at over $700,000 that will add on to that debt service payment in the future. So, it is, it is important, but it's not the only thing that we're funding, we're, generally, it goes in as a revenue source, and then there's the corresponding debt on the appropriation side, so.
Okay, thanks. And then the other question was about traffic issues with the new fire headquarters, and I believe Chief Evers can, I'm sure that was, I remember it being looked at, so.
Yeah, we, we didn't do an actual in-depth traffic study when we went through design development of a new fire, but we did look at it, and it's probably, it's a very nominal effect. If anything, you can argue that Broad Street's wider, so may, slightly enhance our response lines, because currently, Broad Street, we're, it's very, very narrow, we have to wait some time, but it's really a nominal effect on traffic. We still maintain our standard of cover in town when we chose that site, so, we don't foresee any kind of immediate traffic or any kind of delays due to the traffic in the area.
And there's a light at Walnut Street that allows you to control.
Yeah, we'll also control that light, so when a call comes in for, for emergency service, that light automatically changes to red, so we can get through intersection, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that covers all of the questions and comments, so I'm going to declare the comment period closed, and we'll move on to the regular part of the agenda. So, we, first thing we have is a finance ordinance, so.
Reading.
Yes. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Ordinance number 22-3253, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Okay, Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. So, this is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank. As I mentioned during our last meeting at the introduction of this ordinance, in the state of New Jersey, the levy cap law limits the amount of property tax increase, which is the revenue side of the budget, to 2% above the previous year. There is also a second cap, which limits the appropriation side of the budget to 3.5% over the previous year's appropriations. This ordinance allows for an increase of those appropriations up to the 3.5%, and allows any unused amounts to then be banked to offset future unexpected expenditures in either of the next two budget years. The city will not exceed the cap, but this is an important step the city takes every year. Coming in under the cap this year allows us to bank that for next year, just in case we need it, which of course, we hope that we won't. I now move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
I second that.
Okay, so the hearing is open. Are there any comments from members of council on this matter? Comments from members of the public? Okay, so hearing none, I'm going to close the hearing, and we'll move on to the second item, I guess, which is the safety and health ordinance. Madam Clerk, could you please read that?
Yes, I'll read that. Ordinance number 22-3254, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Summit, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Seven, Administrative Policies and Procedures, Section 2-91, Fees for Rescue Services Provided by the Fire Department.
I wanted to just note that there was a Scrivener's error in this ordinance, so before we opened it for public comment, in Section 2-19.2, the word insurance company is there, it should actually read instead, the agency requesting, it's the agency that will be requesting it, will then turn it over to their own insurance company. So, that's a Scrivener's error, and it should just be noted before you open it for public comment.
Okay, so noted, thank you. And Councilmember Little, are you ready to introduce the ordinance for hearing?
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance establishes within the section of the code that is for fees for rescue services provided by the fire department, improvised for the definition of a confined space standby team, and that is when the fire department is requested by an entity to be present for standby purposes while work is being performed in confined spaces. The fire department has been doing more and more of this type of work, and it felt it was necessary to define what that was, and to then, that the fees that would be paid by these entities that are requesting the help of the fire department. So, therefore, there are going to be amended to include that definition and the necessary terms that go along with it, as well as those fees that we opened as for hearing at this time.
I second. Okay, hearing is open. Are there any comments from members of council?
Yes, Council President.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Little.
Were the fees just under a different category originally? Is that how they assess them?
It's under.
Let's say, was it, I know you're establishing a, fees for a specific type, you're creating a category for this type of work by the fire department?
I believe that there, there was, Chief, yeah, Chief, I think, there were fees charged, but it was done differently, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we had, in that ordinance, this ordinance, our fees for rescue services were just like a one-time fee. This really more personality fee to it, because most of these jobs, like, you know, half a day, a full day, so.
Yes, okay, right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, that clarification.
You might as well, you might as well stay. Yeah, just, just some examples of, of this kind of work, what kind of projects are happening in Summit where this is, where you're requesting to be.
Yeah, the, so there are any time, for example, Bristol-Myers Squibb, a lot of confined spaces on that campus, anytime you enter confined space, you owe your standard, you have to have a standby team. A lot of companies, you're the private contractor, the fire department does it as well, so anytime you go, any kind of manholes, any kind of sewer lines, any kind of vessel that have one way out, that's considered a confined space, then you have to have a team to stand by. And all the team does is stand by in case something goes wrong, they take immediate action, and after that, then it becomes an emergency call, and then the fire department gets involved as an emergency end of it. This is really a precautionary with tech occupants that go in those confined spaces.
Very good.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for council? Any comments or questions from the public? Yep, okay.
I'm asking this because I, I don't know, but you mentioned the, Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford Road, you mentioned Bristol-Myers Squibb, referring to them, are they paying you for those services?
That's the purpose of this ordinance.
So, so they're paying you for services?
They paid just a flat fee before, and now it's going to be an hourly fee, so if these guys are there for half a day, they get paid on an hourly basis.
Okay, and, and do other, like overlook, do they pay you for services, too?
Yeah, everybody, anybody who makes, who needs this has to pay.
Just, just for this type of?
For the confined space.
Just the confined space, not for any fire-related services, just confined space? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from members of the public? Anything else from council? Okay, I'm going to declare the hearing closed, and then we're moving on to ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk, could you please read the first finance ordinance?
Yes, 22-3253, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Okay, Councilmember Vartan?
Yes, thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank. As we just held a hearing on this ordinance, I move to adopt it.
I second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Ms. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to our second ordinance for final consideration.
22-3254, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Summit, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Seven, Administrative Policies and Procedures, Section 2-91, Fees for Rescue Services Provided by the Fire Department.
Okay, Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. We just had a hearing on this to establish a confined space standby team definition and fees associated with that work. I ask that we now, and we just had a hearing, I ask that we now adopt that ordinance.
I second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Ms. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We're moving on to resolutions now. Councilmember Vartan, would you like to do the first finance or, resolution?
Most definitely. Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution Number 9570. This resolution authorizes emergency temporary appropriations within the municipal operating budget. So, three reminders. First, the temporary operating budget can only be 26.5% of the budget from the prior year. Second, the temporary operating budget is in place until the final operating budget is passed. And three, again, this is not an emergency. This is only the statutory language required by the state, so that this council can authorize funds to be transferred into their appropriate accounts and pay the bills in a timely fashion. The total amount of this appropriation is $106,800, and brings the total temporary operating budget to $12,554,433. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, roll call, roll call. Soon as I said it, I realized it.
That's okay. Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Ms. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to finance number two, Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. This is Number 9562. This resolution authorizes emergency temporary appropriations within the sewer utility budget. So, this is similar to the last resolution, but instead of the general budget, this is specific to the sewer utility budget. The total amount of this appropriation is $565,000, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Oh, wait, we need comments, right. Yep, I was so busy worrying about the roll call. Okay, anyone have any comments on, on the dis? Anyone from the public have any comments? Okay, so hearing none, now we're ready for a roll call. Okay, Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Ms. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We're moving on to finance number three, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution Number 9499. This resolution authorizes the use of a three-year average when calculating possible revenue in the municipal budget. Normally, it is state law that revenue projections may not exceed revenue from the prior year. However, since the start of the pandemic, certain revenue streams have experienced extreme fluctuation. Understandably, some of these revenue categories include municipal court fees, hotel occupancy fees, and of course, parking revenues. This resolution allows us to utilize a three-year average that includes 2019, which allows us the flexibility to anticipate more revenue in this municipal budget. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries. So, we're now moving on to safety and health. Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. The first safety and health, Council Resolution Number 9572, is to authorize the mission of a letter of request and authorize the execution of an agreement with Bristol-Myers-Squibb for corporate sponsorship program, which would benefit the new fire headquarters project. This is, the conversation was first of all, sort of, when they were going to consider a corporate sponsorship of the new firehouse, and this is going to allow the mayor to submit a request to them in the amount of $405,814, which would cover some of the fitness room equipment and the training and history room, so it would cover a lot of those extras that we just talked about at the fire station, and it will allow the mayor to pursue that with Bristol-Myers-Squibb. So, I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council, or the mayor?
No, it just gives me the option to, to submit a grant request and discuss it with them, and I'm not, then, and that, I, we were, we were, that's the full amount that we're kind of looking for, but maybe more, we'll see. We're going to do as most, as a robust as possible fundraising effort, and this is just one of the places we're starting.
Councilmember Hairston?
I have a question, Council President, and I was just wondering what other kinds of corporate sponsorships we have, I don't know if it's, my question is just about the firehouse, but I was just wondering what other kind of corporate sponsorships we have in town?
Well, we had some, we had some, obviously, through, you know, through, through DCP on the movie night, and through downtown family fun night, these, E-Music, a lot of those are sponsored, there's several, Regal Bank, and I, I, I'm reluctant to say who, because I'm going to miss somebody, but, you know, we have several different corporate And this is just one of the places we're starting.
Council member Hairston?
I, I have a question, Council President.
Yes.
And I was just wondering what other kinds of corporate sponsorships we have? I don't know if it's, my question is just about the firehouse, but I was just wondering what other kind of corporate sponsorships we have in town?
Well, we had some, we had some, obviously through, you know, through, through DCP on the movie night and through downtown family fun night, these, E-Music. A lot of those are sponsored, there's several, Regal Bank. And I, I, I'm reluctant to say who, because I'm going to miss somebody. But, you know, we have several different corporate sponsors for that. And then certainly, we had some support for the community center from, from Celgene and Investors Bank.
And Atlantic Health, I believe, or no?
Not for the community center.
Okay.
But, you know, we, we keep approaching as many as possible.
Right, okay, great, thank you. So this is a good citizenship way for our business leaders to, our business community members to be good citizens?
Yes, and I, I will say that Bristol-Myers Squibb, the representative from that organization with whom I have had a, sort of our liaison, approached me at the groundbreaking to say, if you're going to do some fundraising, we'd like to participate, so let's talk about what you need. So, in fairness, I mean, that was, they, if they came to us, I was going to come to them anyway, but they came to us.
Okay, any other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We've got one more safety and health resolution. Council member Little?
Thank you, Council President. Safety and health resolution number five nine five seven one is a resolution for Summit, for Summit to apply for the federal fiscal year 2022 for the Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management Performance Grant. So this is a request under this grant program for $10,000 to offset the cost of our Office of Emergency Management here in Summit. We had recently appointed new emergency management director. This will allow funds for this, this running of the Office of Emergency Management to go forward in a, you know, well-funded and purposeful way. That's, that would be approved for this resolution.
I second.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we're moving on now to law and labor, council member Miniger? No, council member Hairston, sorry.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution ID number nine five seven six. This resolution requests to authorize extended sick leave with pay for a longtime Department of Community Services Division of Public Works employee who needs an extension of pay from February 16 through April 29, 2022. This is a longtime employee who has not utilized all of their, or much of their sick time, and we would like to have this approved.
I second.
Okay, are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to community programs and parking services, this one's council member Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number nine five six four. Per discussion earlier in closed session, we are declaring a vacancy in the position of part-time maintenance worker in parking services, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're on to capital projects and community services. Council member O'Sullivan, would you like to?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number nine five three seven, to establish the 2022 fees for operating and maintaining the sanitary sewer system. We establish the sewer fees every year at this time, and the 2022 fees reflect a slight increase from last year for ongoing operation, capital, and maintenance expenses. I would like to note that we have very low sewer fees when compared with other municipalities in the area. And I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Come on up, Ms. Gagnon. You're going to become an expert on this.
Sorry. So, Council member O'Sullivan, I, I agree with you that the sewer actually seems very low compared to other municipalities. And the fact that we're, the budget seems pretty high, like we're, we have a lot to do with our sewer system here. Have you guys talked to other cities locally around us to see what they're charging their residents as well? I just feel like this is one thing that maybe we're not charging enough of our residents about with our sewer, and that's something that might have to be increased more on, just out of curiosity, that other towns might be charging a little bit more, and that's something that might, an expense that we might not have to incur on. And we're having these major undertaking of replacing the lines, and it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. So that's just something that I think might have to be looked at, is to see what other municipalities are charging for their sewers for their residents.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gagnon. Do you want to address that, Mr. Schreger? Okay, thanks.
Through you, Council President. Yeah, the study we had done is probably over five years old at this point, where we did have a couple comparable towns to get their sewer rates. We should point out that some towns do just, it is just bolted into their taxes, it's not a separate sewer user fee. So it's not every town we can call. But from the, you know, five plus years ago, you know, we haven't approached that fee level even yet. I think the lowest one then was 500 or eight, or $600 from, from, you know, maybe even a decade ago. So, we have looked into it. So in, in terms of raising it further, we should point out that the budget itself does include capital improvements, so it does include the routine maintenance, it does include our capital program. We do try to, to keep it, you know, the minimum needed. So even this year, despite the fact the joint meeting went up, which is about half of the fee we pay, their fee that they charge us to treat it, went up 7%, we're only going up four. So we are being, you know, fiscally responsible, but that is essentially how the budget is done. So the budget does include maintenance and, and capital projects, so.
So when you get this fee, what you're doing is calculating the total sewer utility cost and dividing it by the number of dwelling units that you have in Summit, as well as the industrial users and the new Providence users, correct?
Correct. There's really three fees we charge. One is our industrial users, a little bit of a complicated equation for how they get charged. There's a straight EDU, which is the equivalent dwelling unit fee that most property owners get within the city, and then the fee to New Providence. So, some, some not difficult but complicated equations how we calculate that. But that, that means that the fee for what joint meeting charges us, and then our operating overhead for the system itself, is all included in the fee we charge residents, including capital improvements and maintenance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schreger.
So, so to clarify, we don't want to, we're not charging a fee to our residents that would, that is more than what it's costing us. And if we did increase the fees to more than it's costing us, that would not really be the way to go.
Correct, right now, we're operating.
It's a net?
Yes, correct.
Right, then that's right. We shouldn't be making money on this, we should, the residents should be paying for what they're using effectively.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Through you, Council President.
Of course.
Most people don't have the choice to use a sewer. Right, you have the choice to, you have the choice to come and park, you have the choice to go and be a member of the pool, be a member of the golf course, you don't have a choice in sewage. So, so this is one, this is one where I would advocate, we, we keep it at a break even, so, thank you.
Yes, we, we do have a monopoly on your sewage.
And I think we should be generous about that.
Thank you, Mr. Schreger. Okay, so with that, are there any other comments, questions, thoughts you'd like to share? So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, go ahead, Council member O'Sullivan, would you like to do resolution two, please?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number nine three two nine, to reject the bid and authorize new advertisement for curbside collection and marketing of recycling for July 2022 through June 2024. The city received one bid for our curbside collection of recycled material, and it had two fatal and incurable defects. We recommend rejecting this bid and authorizing a new advertisement with revised specifications. And I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Council member Allen?
Thank you, Council President.
And then council member Little next.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, you go on then.
So, what does this mean? Is there going to be disruption in our service?
There will, there won't be disruption in our service, but we are going to have to amend the bid specs to attract more vendors. And worst-case scenario, we handle it in-house temporarily until when and if we can attract a vendor to do this for us.
And after, if, if the second bid doesn't work, you have the ability to then go out and negotiate. You have to ident, people who bid on it do it, but you cannot go out and identify anybody and negotiate with contractors that do this type of hauling. That's under the bidding law.
And our contract doesn't expire till the end of June, so we've got some time.
Generally, most of these contractors, you can extend them from month to month.
One last question. So are other towns having this problem?
Every town's having this problem.
Yep, and everyone's getting one bitter.
Okay, because I'm going to say, I think one can DPW handle all that. I would say that I'm so grateful every time they pick up our trash and recycling. And I think that is a really important service. So I don't, I think, could you guys handle that? Through you, Council President?
Through you, Council President. Trick question, because yes, we can handle anything and everything that happens. We're the greatest DPW in the world. But, we, we are, our hands are tied to the, to the market for the materials. So even if we collected where we probably would have to purchase a truck, possibly some new employees, we're still bringing it somewhere, and, and that's the biggest expense right now. We did look at it earlier in the year just to, to see, and we, we knew we were too expensive. But it's really just, just the market, because we still would be, you know, essentially bringing it to someplace. You could either just keep bringing it and hope the market fluctuates, or if we were to lock in a two-year contract for where we brought it, we would be essentially what, what the contractors that are bidding are up to right now, so. In the short term, we, we have done it, I think it was nine years ago, we did have to do it for a few months, so we're, we're definitely capable of doing it. But just longer term, it, it wouldn't be a savings, and, and we would have to, to do some outlay of materials and equipment to accommodate it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Schreger.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, do we have?
Council member Miniger?
Thank you, Council President. Do we have much, have we ever looked into much wider multi-city agreements for these kind of things?
Not for, well, we, we have looked into the municipal utility authorities of Plainfield and Morris County. Plainfield had requirements that wanted the city to purchase new 96-gallon containers for everyone in the city, which now you have about a half-million-dollar capital outlay upfront. And they also weren't going to offer to pay for the actual marketing at the end of, of the, the collection. They were just going to give us driver and trucks. Morris County, and they're facing the same issues we are, trouble staffing, issues like that. They wanted some arrangement that was unique but very difficult for us to meet in terms of we would do it in some other town, they would do our town, it was just very complicated, probably would have taken years to develop, but we did look into that, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Schreger. Any other, oh, Beth, yes, council member Little, sorry.
Thank you. I just, you talk about the broader picture quickly, since I've chaired the CAP committee for the last few years and now co-chairing with Danny and our councilman O'Sullivan, and this has been a perennial issue. And I know, Council President Fox, you are well aware of that as well. The, the market for recyclables has largely dried up in a lot of ways. So they went from being a money-making venture for municipalities to now becoming a service that we are so required to do by the state insurance, and which is a laudable thing to do, is to recycle and produce the waste stream and reuse these plastics. But it's become less of a revenue source and more of a cost for the city, and a more expensive cost each year. And we've seen this when we went out to bid, and it keeps becoming more and more difficult for contractors to bid on these specs, because they're not making the money either. So there, you know, it's just a reality. And we could, even if we're allowed to stop recycling, there will still be costs associated with this, because it would increase our, our tonnage cost, it would increase our waste stream. There, there's this way, as a society, we are producing too much trash. So, one of the ways that we can reduce the cost of the city, as individuals and residents of Summit, is to concentrate on the first two problems of the three prompts that you always hear about, reduce, reuse, recycle. We need to be focusing more on the reduce and the reuse part of that and less on the recycling, because the recycling part is not as easy as it used to be. And this is really, you know, to answer council member Allen's question, and, you know, to talk about it, this is a big problem that is nationwide, is in every municipality, it is a difficult, difficult thing to solve. And we are using too much plastic as a society is having, you know, definitely negative effects. And it's hard to know what to do with it. So we, we're going to have to start focusing on the reduce and the reuse part of the three prompts, so.
Thank you, council member Little, that's a very good point. I think you're free to take your seat. Thank you, Mr. Schreger. Any other questions from council members? From members of the public? On up, yep.
One more.
Okay.
I'm going home, tired.
Okay, so, I know you are too. So, Councilman O'Sullivan, is it $190,000 additional for the disposal? Or is that $190,000 a year, or two years? What I couldn't understand on the, maybe, Mr. Rogers, you can explain that. I was having trouble following that.
So, thank you. We have a, we have a half a year left with our, well, it's a January to June, so we locked into an amount. That amount, now we're looking at the second half and saying it's going to double, you know, that second half amount, that's the $190,000 additional that we budgeted.
Okay.
Over last year.
Okay, so we don't know how much it would be for next year, then?
We don't.
We don't, okay. So, my question for you is, I feel that it's a luxury getting my recyclables taken from me. It's, it's a nice perk to have. I'm sure a lot of people in town are going to hate me for saying this. But do we really need it? We have this great transfer station growing up here, I call it the dump. It's our great transfer station that we can go to. Is it something that we can not have as this luxury? You know, we're very entitled here in Summit, that people can actually go to the transfer station and utilize a transfer station for what it is? Mr. Schreger, can we, I know you're, you're speaking about the, still, it's the cost of the waste that we have, but maybe we can do an initiative to reduce the amount of plastic and bring your recyclables to the transfer station and not have people come to pick up your stuff? I mean, I, I think there's a, we're trying to decrease the amount of debt, right? And in, find ways to get rid of all these expenses. And right now, if this is such an increase, then I think this is a luxury. And I'm calling it a luxury, and maybe people might hate me for that, but so be it. So that's my suggestion.
Thank you for your comment. I think one of the things is that there isn't a market for these materials, so we would have to pay to get rid of them if they made it to the transfer station anyway. So I'm not really sure if there would be such a, a great savings. I, you know, Mr. Schreger, if you have something to add to that. But it's a problem with what we've got at the transfer station, too. That contract is just separate.
Yes, I could, through you, Council President, I, I can assume it would be cheaper than if we went out and did it ourselves with the collection, if, if residents were, were required to bring it to the transfer station, yes. But just as a frame of reference, a transfer station now collects about 300 tons of recyclable material, just the cardboard, paper, commingled. And the contractors pick up about 1,700. So we'd have to just increase capacity at the transfer station to accommodate, you know, five times more than what is there, so that, that could result in probably another tractor, but not a whole truck, but, but maybe another driver. But, but I think it would be cheaper than if we did curbside, but it, there's still, then where are we bringing it, and what's the cost there, so. But it's something we could definitely look at more specifically.
Through, through you, Council President, since it seems like we're willing to go down this rabbit hole a little bit. There, what's the percentage now, remind me, of the people that are, that are at their home utilizing the recycling services and bringing them actually out to the curb? It's not as high as we would hope, right?
That, who are?
Who are actually bringing their?
Using curbside.
Using the curbside, making use of.
Versus taking it themselves.
Right.
Yeah, I, I can only speak on tonnage itself, so that's essentially, you know, 15% are, are bringing it to the transfer station, about 85% are out there. Just on tonnage, it could work out differently, where really it's only 50% are out at the curb, it just happens to be heavier, the people that put it at the curb versus bringing it. But just, just on weight-wise, it seems to be 85% are using curbside.
Right, but so, so then, just for one final, I guess, sort of thought about this. We're paying now already, and we will continue to be paying a, a, a contract fee for curbside pickup for the entire city, a good chunk of which doesn't use it, right? So, so if we're doing it, we should be encouraging people to use it. If we're paying for the contract, we should be encouraging people to use it. And if we're not, then we should, you know, decide on the cost, then, of what hauling it away from the transfer station would be. But if you're right now not interested in putting your curbside recycling, you're recycling on the curbside, I don't think we're going to be convincing people to put it in their car and drive it to the transfer station themselves. So I think the, the way that we capture the most recyclable material is this way, curbside. Of course, then, what happens with it and where it goes is another huge problem that is a little bit above our pay grade at the moment. So, anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schreger. Yep. All right, anything else, or are we ready to vote? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, and we're on to capital projects number three. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, council president. This is ID number 9510 to authorize the 2022 submittal of the 2021 tonnage report data to the state. Every year, the city of Summit is required to submit this report about our recycling numbers, which is due in early May. New Jersey state mandates that every municipality has a recycling program in place, and the state provides funding based on this data, and Summit typically receives a little over $30,000. I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Mr. Schreger? Are we good? You look like you're, you've got something you want to?
No, I'm, I, I can just clarify one thing through you, council president. The, the report that is in the packet is just a, more or less a template from last year. We don't have everyone's data yet, but when we do, we're happy to circulate it around just to see the, the tonnage of material that is recycled throughout the city. Because as part of our requirement, we have to record for everyone, even if they're not going through us in any capacity. So Bristol Myers Squibb, Overlook Hospital, any contractor, so that gets put in the report. So it's far greater than just the, you know, 2,000 of tons we just do as, as residents, so. But we'll share it when we have it, so.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we're on to capital projects number four.
Thank you, council president. This is ID number 9540 to authorize submission of a grant application for 2022 to the Association of New Jersey Environmental Commission's Open Space Stewardship Program, or ANJEC. The Environmental Commission has successfully applied for this grant in the past, and this year's application is for signage at our newly established Tiny Forest, which is right behind the community center. It was nice to see so many volunteers helping plant trees this past Saturday, including every member of this body. The funds in this grant require no match from the city and will be used for design, materials, and printing of the signage. I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we're on to capital projects number five. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, council president. This is ID number 9542. To authorize the temporary use of public parks and fields by local exercise and fitness businesses. We have done this successfully the last two years to help our local exercise and fitness businesses, and the committee is recommending we allow this activity again during the upcoming warmer months. This resolution will provide much-needed economic relief in what we hope are the final stages of the pandemic. Scheduling will work the same as the last two years through our Department of Community Programs, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So moving on to capital projects number six. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, council president. This is ID number 9552 to authorize additional Earth, 2022 Earth Day activities. As we just had our Earth Day cleanup this past Saturday, fourth and fifth grade students and parent chaperones would like to do a cleanup of the Village Green this Saturday morning, starting at 9:00 a.m. And I ask that we approve the additional Earth Day activities.
I second.
Are there comments from members of council? All this from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we're moving on to capital projects number seven. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, council president. This is ID number 9551 to declare a vacancy for an engineering assistant pending our closed session discussion. In consideration of our closed session discussion regarding a vacancy, I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we're now moving on to the consent agenda and.
There's a one on the floor.
Oh, right, sorry, sorry. So, that's right, it's our CAP committee from the floor, so councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, council. Sorry. Thank you, council president. This is ID number 9606, a resolution from the floor. This resolution from the floor will authorize the city to sign an easement agreement with New Jersey American Water to permit them to install water service to the Habitat for Humanity project at 146 Morris Avenue. The easement will be located on the lot that was newly created by relinquishing a portion of Ashwood Court in accordance with the settlement agreement the city has with the adjacent property owners. Habitat for Humanity cannot begin major construction until water service and a fire hydrant have been installed on the site, and New Jersey American Water will not begin work until all easements are secured. I ask that we approve this resolution from the floor.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council?
You're almost one of us now. Spent a lot of time up at the podium.
Through you, council president, I just wanted to clarify, and really to this listener, the address is 146 and not 143. I made the error because there's been, there's a lot of easements and complication here, and it's Lot 13, and I just kind of merged the address and the lot there. So it is 146.
And he read 146, too. That'll be two demerits.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schreger. Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we're, so that, motion carries, and now we're moving on to the consent agenda. So unless anyone has any comments on anything specific on the agenda, we'll take the whole thing as, take it all as a whole. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we're on to, let's see, I guess it's council members' new business. Comments and, yep. Anyone have any comments?
I don't know why you're looking at me.
Because it's usually you. Anyone, nope. All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.